Meeting will be called to order. Approval of the minutes. Uh, roll call, please.
Chair Ms. St. Morton?
Here.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Here.
President Lutz?
Here.
Secretary Davis?
Here.
trustee Hutterby?
Here.
trustee Pianer?
Here.
trustee Neda?
We're gonna have approval of the agenda. I have a motion.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we're gonna have approval of the minutes. And the minutes are of the April 24th monthly meeting and February 27th and March 24th. Both sessions as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
And move we accept the minutes?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Citizen participation, verbal communications.
Good evening. Well, as you know, we have a tentative agreement on a three-year contract. We came to that agreement a couple of weeks ago. The WCC EA membership have ratified it. We hope that we're gonna hear later this evening that the board has agreed to as well. I wanna thank the college's team for the job they did in negotiating the contract. I think we worked together, excuse me, I think we worked together very well. I think we came to a good agreement, made changes of the contract that in some cases were absolutely necessary to be made so that, so that things could be moved forward in a positive way. And so, I wanna thank the members of the college's team for all the work they did. Dean Good, Dean Jennings, Dean Tucker, Vice President Hearns, Vice President Blakely, and especially Vice President Veltrey. Vice, I'm sorry, Vice President Veltrey did a really good job from our point of view of, of taking charge of the negotiations and making sure that we were all moving in a positive way. And sometimes that was like herding cats for all concerned. So, we're, we're real happy with what went on. And again, I hope that we find out here in a few minutes that you are too. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any public comments? Okay. Any written communications?
There was two received.
Okay. Alright, we're going down to special reports. And that's college goals, strategic plan accomplishments 2018, 17, and 18.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees. This evening is, we have the culmination of the goals that we have been working on this past year. However, what's really important about these goals is that, you know, probably the only people that those two diagrams make any sense to are the people that were here when they were developed. We initiated a strategic plan in 2011 where, based on that plan, we did an environmental scan, both internally and externally. And based on that scan and working with our community as well as our college and our students, we identified goals and priorities that we were going to work toward. Some things take time. And, and it does take time, but there has been a great deal of input across the college in making what you hear tonight happen. I am very pleased to say that this strategic plan is an operational plan. In addition to the plan that we've developed, you will hear how the faculty that helped develop the plan, the staff, the administrators, the community members, all the people that gave us all that information, you'll be able to see today some of the result of that work. In your binder, and I'm gonna turn it over to our leader, fearless leader here, Julie, in your binder you have a sheet, a little folder, and it's just something for you to work through, which is, so it says President's Goals, Annual College Goals, and President's Goals, Strategic Priorities and Goals. You'll see the years, 2017, 2018 on your page on the left are the goals that we worked on this year. 2016 through 19 are the goals that take three years to complete. Everything is a process, so there's a lot of things that are really great that have been started that will even be greater. So, I am very thankful to the entire staff, all the community members that have helped us, supported us, the students, the leaders of these teams that have made this happen. And now with that, I'm not talking anymore. I'm gonna turn it over to Julie Morrison. And also, I'd like to let you know that we tried to make this as exciting as possible, which is why you have snacks.
For a piece of presentation, I have a presentation on the accomplishments related to our strategic and college goals for 2017, 2018. As an overview, we've been providing these updates since our very first strategic planning process in 2012. As the President mentioned, the maps, you can't really see the one back there, go back to our very first strategic plan from 2012, 2015, and the Elko back there, and our uptake to that plan in 2016, 19, which is still in process, in that Elko there. So, tonight we are reporting on both strategic plan goals as well as college goals. All of our goals are tied to our strategic plan priorities. Our strategic plan, as you know, was originally based on shaping our future 2012, 2015, which was updated in 2016, 19, and is aligned with the eight strategic plan priorities which you see on the right of the screen there. Professional development and organizational health, student success, institutional agility and responsiveness, visibility and branding, workforce development, academic partnerships, funding and resources, and community development. The strategic plan priorities are institutional in nature, and these, the goals that we work on related to the strategic plan are long-term in nature as well. They tend to be three-year goals, as the President mentioned. They're led by priority teams. This was the model that we set up way back in 2012, and it has continued since then. In addition, we have annual college goals. These are also aligned with those same eight priorities. They are led by executive leadership, but they are implemented by faculty and staff across the college. They're more operational in nature, and these are the annual goals that we are reporting on. And again, the fold-out, those, the ones on, that are titled, the annual college goals are those annual operational goals, and the ones on the left are those strategic priority and goals that are longer term. Tonight, we will be providing highlights of both of these goals, the strategic priority goals and the annual college goals. They will be a little bit blended together. There's some overlap amongst these goals, as you can imagine, because they all spring from those eight strategic plan priorities. This year, we talked a lot with the board about student success, which is a major priority of the strategic plan. We had a retreat in March, as you'll remember, about student success, retention, and completion, which is priority two, and has been a big focus ever since the strategic plan was put in place. We've decided to mix it up just a little bit and, and mix up the priorities and not do them in order. And we're actually starting with one that tends to be put to the end, and we're starting with priority eight, which is community development, which is actually getting a lot more attention right now. And we wanted to especially highlight that one up front this year. So, without further ado, I'm going to sit down and, and man the PowerPoint from down there and turn it over to Michelle Mueller and Keela Samuels and Nico Dawson to talk about community development.
Hello, everyone. I'm Keela Samuels. I'm pharmacy faculty, and I've been on the Community Development Committee for about three years. I think this is the first time that I have sat here in front of you all. And I just have to say, one of the first things that I did when I became a part of this committee was to go out and look and see what is, is out there. So, I went and I, I went to the Heritage Festival and the Ann Arbor Art Fair and Dexter Days, just to see what was, was happening. And you know, my, my, my feeling was, we are very well represented in the community, and they really respect us. I was at the Ann Arbor Art Fair, and a bunch of preschoolers came by, and they saw WCC, and they said, "Look, my mommy goes to that school." I thought that that was, was wonderful. So, we have been working on a few goals, and my colleagues are going to elaborate, but a couple of things that I wanna tell you what we've done recently. One of the things that we needed to do also was to get a lot of information of who our partners were. As you can see, we are to engage strategically with nonprofits and community and look at our connections with local organizations and so forth. And we have a very, very diverse faculty, as you know, that were out there doing community service, and we did not know about that. So, we surveyed them this year and found out that there was like 35 different things that we didn't know that faculty were doing. So, we were excited about identifying those gaps and, and seeing where we are in the community, and we're gonna hear about that report. The other thing that I want to report on that was implemented this year was the Speakers' Bureau. So, this was something that you have heard about, and it did get implemented this year. So, we're excited about that. We had four presentations done, and there's two that are scheduled right now. And we're looking at developing that and, and seeing more into that area. This is more like an, an extension of our Free College Day, which has been very, very successful. I know, as a faculty member, I have participated in the, the last two sessions in Free College Day. And this past one, I was just pleased, I was one of the, the first groups to, to get 30 participants in the community to come to hear my seeds and weeds lecture. So, there's a lot of expertise out there, and we're just, just over thrilled that we can share that with the community.
In addition to the things that Keela talked about this year, we do a number of things already in, in Eastern Washtenaw, Eastern Washtenaw County. And Nico's gonna talk about the new things that we've added and some of the recurring activities that we have. But in addition to that, we really took a look at how we could put some strategic communications in place to be able to really create more of a visibility and an awareness of what we do in Eastern Washtenaw County and what we do here at the Community College. So, if you, Julie has turned it to the next slide, and what you'll see, there is a piece, not only did we provide it, I think it was provided for you in your packet information, but in addition to that, bi-weekly, we're also mailing pieces to the community to make sure that they're aware of what we are doing and how they can get help from us. And you'll notice that we added a new telephone number to make it easy, 1-833-WCC-IPSY, so that they can contact us and we can work with them further. So, I'll turn it over to Nico.
Okay. Good evening.
Hello.
For those who may not know me, Nico Dawson, I serve as our Dean of Economic and Community Development. Currently been here at the college for about two and a half years, and as Keela has mentioned, I equally have sort of dove into the community a little bit as well to find out who some of our partners are. And so, I'll probably make some, make mention of some of those as I'm going through some of the bullets. But as you'll notice, here's some of the 2017, 2018 new initiatives that were hosted and also continued. The Campus Explore Program, where we invited eighth graders to come on campus, was held here, which was a very big success. Our VITA-X, which stands for Vehicle to Everything, I know a lot of times we use acronyms, but the VITA-X Technology for Land, Sea, and Air Workshop was also held, which was very successful. Of course, it was paid and funded through our U of M CCAT grant, and so, of course, that was another success. We implemented the Learning Blade STEM software. This is really a gaming-type software. It was our way of trying to ensure we created other sort of unique methods to engage our students, both in the middle school and also high school. And of course, this was the first year that we really introduced it, and it's been successful thus far. We also conducted our computer programming, computer programming training at Scarlet Middle School. Again, grade six through eight, we had 13 participants. This also was another one of those unique elements that we had that was aligned with our CCAT grant with U of M. We submitted a coordinated funding proposal to strengthen our partnership with Park, with Parkridge and after-school programming. It was approved. I think right now it's more of an unofficial kind of an announcement now, but we've been awarded $66,000 for two years, which is approximately $132,000 with United Way as the funder. So, this is again, something we're looking to continue to expound on. Moving on to the very next slide, Ypsilanti Night is scheduled to happen on June 18th, where we're gonna bring in families and youth that will be entering the Ypsi Community High School. And we want them to come on campus to take part into some, some tours, get a chance to see what campus life is like. And also, we wanna highlight some of the programming and have a nice dinner for these participants. Ypsilanti Community High School initiatives. You'll notice that we have four bullet here. We've introduced our Manufacturing Certificate Program. We've also offered the Child Development Associate Certificate, the Alex Testing, which is both programming and also testing, which is gonna support our dual enrollment students. And of course, we have hosted some math bootcamps, or scheduled to host some math bootcamps for summer 2018. USDL Youth Bill Grant Activity.
Linda, would you like, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Just say anything about that?
No, so we've coordinated with our math department, coordinated with the math coordinator at Ypsi High School, so that we're using Alex with the STEM Middle College. Those students have to access math classes, they have to be at math level three. So, because we're their educational partner, we are letting them use our Alex, and so that they can get up to level three and access our math courses.
Okay. And what I'd like to do, just for the sake of clarity as well, I'm gonna defer to the next two bullets, to Vice President Blakely, where we highlight the Youth Bill Activity Grant, but also the Ypsilanti STEM Middle College. I believe she has some greater detail than I could provide, so.
So, we're in the third year of our US Department of Labor Youth Bill Grant, so we are in the process of completing the house in Ypsilanti Township as part of those grant requirements. Our STEM Middle College, this is the first year STEM Middle College requires, allows students to come for a fifth year, so more to WTMC. So, this is the first year we have some graduates from STEM Middle College. And we also opened an office, so we are having our Ypsilanti High School recruiter that will be at the high school on Tuesday and Thursday mornings for, from 7:30 to 9:30. And that allows students to ask questions, but also parents who might be dropping off their children at the high school can come in and get some questions answered. We've also coordinated with the IT Department, and so, as we are, we have a regular recycling program for our computers. Our computers, even when we recycle them, are much newer than the computers that Ypsilanti has. So, we're donating 70 this week, but there'll be more, hundreds more, as we recycle them off-campus. They've tried to incorporate more computer classes into their curriculum. They have a ninth-grade academy, and they're trying to bring the computer skills up, so that's a much-needed resource that those high schools have.
And the final bullet point, which is the Parkridge Community Center, where we continue to offer job readiness, after-school training for, for our high school students. And actually, we're, we're supporting both grade school, middle school, and high school students all year long at Parkridge. There's an African culture class that has recently been, been launched. The beauty of this program is that it was actually arranged and also facilitated by part-time employees of WCC that are housed at the Parkridge Community Center, along with our WCC and EMU interns. So, we're actually kind of providing opportunity for those to get some real field experience with this opportunity as well. Okay. The Parkridge Open House, I did reach out to ensure I had a date. This happened on March 31st. We had over 100 residents from the new Parkridge Community Housing project that came over, not to mention many men and women from the greater community that wanted to find out what we were doing there. This was a great success. The Parkridge Meal Assembly, again, I don't wanna do this in injustice, I'd like to refer or to defer to Bill Johnson. I believe this was something that he assisted us with facilitating, where we were able to offer 16 package meals and 10,000 servings. So, Bill, if you could chime in.
We had our entire department, finance and IT, participate in an all-afternoon event. And Pack Shack does this around, around the country, and we had paid for all the food supplies. They brought the equipment, and, and then we engaged with nonprofits around town who then came and took our pack, our packaged food meals, and then provided them back out into the community.
Work Keys Testing continues at Harriet Street, which again, is another one of our off-site sort of extension centers. We, we're continuing to provide workplace readiness, training, and supports. The, the Work Keys Testing really is just ensuring that those who are interested in getting an added credential to support whether or not they're employment-ready or not, it just gives them that credential, commonly known as the National Career, Career Readiness Certificate, which usually you can get a silver, gold, platinum kind of a level. It just kind of shows that you have some foundational skill and you're ready for the workplace. In addition to the Work Keys, new entry-level employment training programs. You guys probably remember the press release that went out about the McKinley Project and our partnership with them. We were successful at hosting that project. It ended on April 27th. We sought to get 15 participants. We got 13. One dropped out early. 12 stayed through the entire program. 10 of those individuals are currently working at McKinley as we speak. They hit the ground running, appliance repair, drywall repair, basic electrical, basic plumbing. I mean, it's been, it's been a rich opportunity. We're actually gonna be scheduled to meet with them again in August, to launch again in October. And they didn't wanna touch the spring and summer season, which is their busiest time. But if you wanna see some of the participants, that's a group shot of those individuals that took part, and their McKinley hats and shirts. And we have one young lady in there, and I understand she was almost like a co-teacher in the program, so it went very well. The ITS, or Intelligent Transportation Field Technician Program. Early on, we started to have some conversation with Integral Blue. These are the individuals that are actually working on the roads as we speak, laying fiber-optic line, putting up the RSU roadside units, those kinds of things. We actually aligned this to meet an employment, sort of a need that they have as well. They're doing projects all over the state right now, including the ACM. And so, we, after doing a ride along with them and seeing a day in the life of an ITS field tech, we said we better develop something to support it. And so, therefore, that's how this got its birth, and it's now running with at least two participants in it, and it's online. So, so far, so good. Certified Fiber Optic Technician, we felt that since these guys are out laying line, we may wanna find a way to certify them. So, we've entered into a partnership with BDI Data Link to ensure that even if they wanna participate in this, they can actually get a certified fiber-optic certificate, which validates the work that they've been doing to support ITS field techs and others, if they so choose. And the Dialysis Technician is also a new launch, with hopes that we will have some positive visibility on it as well. We continue with our GED completions with workforce training. We've had three students complete. The Stere Processing Technician Training, with hopes that they will be hired potentially either by U of M or St. Joe. And I know, Linda, if you maybe wanna chime in on this, you had a few nuggets on this.
I'm so excited about this program. So, we had 31 students, we had the pinning on Friday evening, so we had 31 students, and this is the first time that we've actually taken and allowed some of our GED students who were kind of making really good progress to be in the certificate program at the same time. And so, three of the 31 students who completed the program were GED students. And I have to say, two of the stars of the program were the GED students, and so, they were recognized at the pinning. But this certificate program, it's a two-semester program, but students are getting hired for $18 or $19 at the local hospitals, which is, it's a really exciting program, so. And it's a precursor to go into search tech, and for the first time ever this fall, we have our search tech program.
Filled.
Filled. So, very exciting.
Recurring events, activities, and offerings. If you notice in the K-12 Parkridge box, you'll see where Mentor to Youth has continued to support elementary and middle school students. Our summer camps, we were trying to get 100 people to participate in the summer camps. We fell just short of that by getting 88 to participate in the summer camp this year, so really, it was still a success for us. The Drill Team, which is really a community-based offering in partnership with the college, had 12 participants. An Open Computer Lab, and as you notice, you see the 25, the 15, the 17, as I mentioned, we work with elementary, middle, and high school students. And I believe the elementary school students had a higher number because of the IMATH program that they're aligned with. And so, again, another something that we can continue to push into the greater community. Youth Leadership, supporting our middle schoolers, and of course, the WCC Girls Club. This is really like an exposure kind of thing for young ladies. I think for the last 10 years, we've taken young ladies to like the city of Chicago and other states around the Midwest, just exposing them to things outside of the, the community in which they live, to ensure that they are aware of career possibilities and also things that they may aspire to do later on in life.
We continue to have our Summer Bridge Program, so this will be the fifth summer that we'll offer our Summer Bridge Program. We, that is a program that we focus on reading and writing skills and soft skills to, so that the students who are interested in dual enrollment can be able to access those classes. Last summer was the first time we added a math component to that, and we had some really, really good success with 11 of the 15 students making progress in their math. We continue to offer our Senior Program. That's offered at the high school. We offer a, a fall component and a winter, and then we also use that lab to offer summer sections to the community as well. And remember that we've started, we, at the Ypsilanti Township Community Center, we offer GED classes as well as ESL for the community. That's in a partnership with the WISD. So, we continue to do that as well.
Senior Focus continues to be offerings for senior citizens at the Parkridge Community Center, which is still running very, very well. And I bought, I bought a little, as, as they would say in the sports world, I brought some hardware, but we've, we've been awarded the 2018 Community Partners Award, and if you could kind of raise that up a little bit, for the work we've been doing to support small business in this region. And so, both Dr. Rose, myself, and one other person that's escaping me were present for this award ceremony. Charlie Penner. And it was because of the work that Charlie and those guys are doing that we were able to receive such an award. And it was a pretty festive event. I don't think it's something we'll forget, because it certainly was non-traditional. But nonetheless, we had a great time, great meal, and of course, we, we brought the hardware with us. And I believe now we're at the WCC Dental Clinic? I don't wanna...
We offer that for adults in the community.
In the dental lab, OE, right in the OE building, right? Yep. And it runs from February to April every year. And it's very reasonable. You can get x-rays and a cleaning for like $15.
I think we're at the K-12 College Credit. I believe that's Vice President Blakely as well. Did I, did I miss that one?
Sure.
Okay.
I covered that.
All right. And lastly, the Unemployment to Underemployment Initiatives. We continue to provide employment services at Harriet Street. Again, we have staff that's housed there. They are providing employment services from resume writing, mock interviews, job training, that kind of thing, with hopes that many women who are coming to get these supports can find employment and work. We have a free computer lab there where they have total access to any time they need it, when the hours, within the business hours that it's open. And of course, they partner with us, both there and also on campus in many of our job and career fairs that we continue to host. So, a lot of activity that we continue to offer to the greater community.
Student success? All right. Well, if you don't mind, we can go ahead and, I'm asking the presenters here, do you mind if we ask questions as we go?
Sure.
No, I think it'd be fine.
Sure.
Why would we do that? Who, whose hands go first?
Please.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Do you have a sense of what the pay scale is for the McKinley graduates?
Yeah, they actually started the, the participants out with $13.50 an hour to get them through the training. After the training, up to one year, they're gonna elevate them from $13.50 to $15 an hour. They will be, again, sort of reviewed annually. They have the possibility of going from 15 to 17. They have the possibility of going from 15 to 17, 17 to 20 is what they're doing in like three to five-year increments.
Are there other property managers who are interested in this?
Yes, they are. Because of the press that we received on the McKinley Project, we're now talking with Odyssey.
Okay.
I believe it's Odyssey out of Linaway County. They've notified us. There is the Ann Arbor Building Associates have notified us as well. I believe they're interested in talking with us. And we're trying to align calendars now for future meetings.
Is there any requirement for those graduates to stay with McKinley for any length of time, you know?
Hmm.
That is too many.
No?
Nothing that stood out, other than of course, those sort of basic work skills that they're expecting, which is that you come to work, you're timely.
Well, but I have to work for McKinley for six months because they pay for this or a year or...
You know what? I can't recall it, but I can certainly get the information back to you.
Are we seeing an increase in enrollment from Ypsilanti High School?
Yes. And especially the dual enrollment. So we were at 47 last winter. We are at 87 this winter. They expect to be at 120 in the fall and possibly 200 by winter of '19. Because we're expanding the dual enrollment from STEM Middle College to also include the other learning community, which is the AC Tech.
And how many sort of contracts, whatever you want to call it, have we had with the Speakers Bureau, you know?
So there were four presentations that have been done, and this has been out of Dr. Hearn's office, so she can probably...
As well as marketing.
Mm-hmm, and marketing.
We have two more scheduled so far. We have four. They seem to come in spurts once it was published on the record. We got a lot of inquiries, and some of them have been multiple. Some people have asked for multiple speakers to come on nutrition, health and wellness. We have one on strategic HR. So it's been a variety of topics.
And one more question. Is there something we can do with, I mean, I've known that faculty are involved in community service for a long time, but is there something we can do with that? I mean, just to know that there are faculty out there doing stuff is good, but what's the next, is there a next step or not, just to know that they're there?
So, one of the things that we were looking at is just getting all the encompassing aspects of how we are touching the community. And I think that getting that information also will help lead into the Speakers Bureau.
Yeah.
So it's a nice tie in there because we'll know, have more information of how we can have faculty be a part of that Speakers Bureau and get there.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Kirsty.
Follow-up on McKinley. McKinley Associates operates in a number of states.
Right.
Where are the assignments of our students?
Right now, the assignments are just around the corner at the Glencoe Estates. That's where most of the work is done.
Okay. If one of our students does well in that, are they likely to be offered McKinley position elsewhere in other properties, other states?
Well, we found that many of them have actually been dispersed across the region as we speak. We just had a debrief with them last week. And so the lion's share are now currently with Glencoe. There are a couple that have been moved to different areas around the region. But I do believe there's possibilities for one to live out of state.
Nice opportunities for advancement for those.
Yeah, to ascend further. They're pretty excited about what we've done thus far.
Yeah. June 18th Family Night, Ypsilanti. How many people will attend that?
I believe...
We're inviting all of the incoming, so eighth to 12th graders and their parents so we can expose the parents to our programs, as well as all the students to the dual enrollment opportunities and the programs that we're offering. So we're hoping to have a big crowd.
50, 100?
Where is it?
A big stick.
150, 100.
I'm, you know, if we can get 150, I think we'd be able to show. So that's the Monday after school gets out.
And where is that?
It'll be on campus. It'll be here. It's here.
So one of the...
Go ahead.
Thank you. So one of the goals by inviting students and parents is to also encourage parents who might want to sign up. So it's kind of like a double opportunity.
If you feed them, they will come.
And we'll talk about all the programs. So we'll have, you know, we'll have a, you know, talk about if they need GED, we'll have our GED programming plus our other programming. Kirsty.
Two areas. The Dental Clinic, is that a one-time thing or is that an ongoing thing?
Ongoing.
And then how many participants, how many people come and take advantage of it? How do we promote it? And do we have any...
We market it very local. It's put in the school newspaper. We advertise and we put up flyers. So primarily market it to our students and to people that come on campus here. But we do have community members that do come in too.
And do we collaborate or work with the company's free Dental Clinic entity at all?
No, but that's why we think we don't, it's underutilized. We actually have extra seats, so that's why we're thinking of doing some more with marketing to increase in the community. Because there's Hope Dental Clinic in the area too. So there's a couple of other low-cost dental clinics available for community. But it's something that we definitely want to look at to expand it more. Because those also help our dental students because those are patients that they're seeing and get clinical hours for, so.
And then I guess for Bill Johnson, the Pack Shack Meal Thing that your department participated in. You mentioned that you have local nonprofit, I mean, Pack Shack is a national group. But you had local nonprofits that helped with the distribution of the packs. Can you share what some of those local nonprofits were?
So Harvest Table, I think Harvest Table is one of them. I think Catholic charities of this area. We have about four or five different, we reached out because we had sold so many meals, the 10,000-plus meals.
Was Food Gatherers?
Food Gatherers was one, yes.
Okay.
What's that?
Safe House.
Safe House. Thank you. Crystal, yeah?
Okay. Thank you very much.
My question is back to Nico. At the, you're saying that the students are, you're trying to get the students to Parkridge. So how are you going to get the students there? Is it through their counselors or, you know, through the school there to Parkridge? Or they just go on their own by word of mouth?
I think one of the biggest ways that we've talked about is of course, working with our marketing partners with hopes that we can get things to counselors and also through the school districts. But we also recognize that we may have to kind of work with some of our current partners, like our park community groups. We have the monthly meeting where many of those guys are part of nonprofits, and they can certainly get the word passed by, you know, sort of relationships and the networks. So we're really looking at a variety of ways to get the students to participate and to come.
I'm looking at, you know, because of a lot of the gain activity in that area, is it, are there any social workers going out into that particular location to try to get, reach these parents and young people?
I would assume yes, but I don't know if I'm the right person to answer. I would assume yes, no.
Yeah, I believe that there are, and I think that too, when we reached out initially, we reached out to Ypsilanti New Housing, or the Ypsilanti New Housing Project when everybody moved back in. So like summer camp, for example, last year was about 88 students. But that was because the new Ypsilanti housing development was closed. Nobody was back in town or basically back in the area where they were living. And so once everybody moved back, that's why they ended up, the group ended up having the open house to be able to invite anybody who was new into the area to come in to see what was happening at Parkridge. So it's been an opportunity for us to work with the Housing Commission and some of the others in the area. But like Nico said, there's probably about 60 individuals that meet on Mondays each week at Parkridge, and they represent social workers in all types of different organizations. And that's an opportunity to share information and to be able to really rely on each other to be able to help get that information out.
Yeah, I, I'm just going to say this real quick. When I worked with the county and I had to go into that area, it's a tough nut to crack. The people are very distrustful. And so, you know, you got to really get into letting them know that you're there to try to help them. And a lot of them just say, I don't want your help. So it's really difficult. So I'm just trying to see what else, you know. I think that at this point in time, you know, what you're doing sounds great. Let's just see what happens afterwards, what you're doing.
I agree with you on that, and I just want to make a point of being... A product of that area as a young person. Getting people that are part of the community involved, I think is key. One of my pharmacy technology students was a work-study student there at Parkridge, and she lived there also. And I'm so proud of her going through the pharmacy tech program, and now she's going to be able to go and she did receive a job at University of Michigan. And she says, she calls me Dr. Kila, and you know, I was just so grateful that she got hired at University of Michigan. She's making $17 an hour. She's never had that income before. So partnering like that. She was a student, she was a work-study student. She was right there in Parkridge. And if we could get more of those connections, I think we got a winner.
I agree with you. You know, it was really hard, myself and a couple of other workers, you know. When we were down at Harriet Street Center, I was one that helped get, open it and, you know, working with those people to try to find jobs. And we collaborated with the college. We brought in computers. That's when another person was here and showed them. We were building computers so that they would build the computers so they could take home. And then they, it was still difficult. So this isn't an easy task. It's very hard, so we can't give up on them. We have to keep fighting them so that they can see that we're there for them, that we're trying to help them. And not so much to put them down, but to bring them up. And that's the key. Because I was at Parkridge a lot. I was talking to the, at the office a lot about, you know, what's going on? Keep me informed. Let me know, you know, what is it that we can do as, you know, yes, we were government, but yet we are workers. And how can I help you as a worker to, you know, to get you what you need, to meet your needs? And it was hard. It was very hard, yes.
Those Monday meetings are the most impressive things I've ever been to with the whole community of professionals and residents sharing what's going on. Just one quick question. As I understood it, the new Parkridge community had its own community center. And I'm just curious as to how, are they working together with the other Parkridge center? Is there, or is there just the park, the original Parkridge working? How's that going?
I think there is a blended effort. I spoke to Anthony Williamson probably about two weeks ago. And I know he's been working with the head of that community center to talk about some blending.
The other one, yeah, the new one.
Yeah, because, you know, he wants to ensure that one doesn't get sort of traded for the other.
Right.
And that they work collaboratively. So I believe there's some blending of the effort that's happening as we speak.
I'd also like to encourage anyone who'd like to send a kid to camp to contribute to the Parkridge Center for the camp is going to start pretty soon here.
Agreed.
So that's a good thing to do. It's very inexpensive to send one of those kids to camp.
I just have a quick question.
Yes. So the young lady that you mentioned, I would like to think that there are many other students like herself that have come out of that community, as you just stated for you. I would, is there, are we using them, and I hate to use the word "use," but to help bridge the gap as the chair stated, to get the community more on board with the efforts that we are trying to develop there in the community to get the residents, the students specifically, to come to Parkridge, come to WCC. And those who are successful and come in, rising up out of that community, are we using them in some way to give back as a spokesperson? And to be an example, because I think, and I'm looking at, they'll be more inclined to see their own, you know, that knows their family, knew them when they were a baby, saw them, you know, struggle through school, see their transformation as they, you know, travel on their educational journey to the person that they have ultimately become. So do we have more students or could we use more students like this individual and yourself, now that you're a professional here, to, but namely the students, the young person, to say, here, can you be the spokesperson and bring more people in?
This is sort of what we're looking at for visibility in terms of outreach to the community, to identify students that have attended the college either in the past or currently, and to be able to highlight, you know, what has happened with them as a result of them being engaged with the community college in some way, and telling those stories. You know, so that it's a person that's relatable to them.
Right, and it is the story that counts. You know, a lot of people, yeah, they understand, okay, yeah, they struggled, you know, they went to school, oh wow, they're really great, making a lot of money. But it's the stories that stick. It's the stories that really impact and resonate and help them to truly understand what could be possible for them or, you know, someone else in their family.
I think you make a very great point. And matter of fact, just last week, I was contacted by marketing to ask about some students. And this particular student, I did recommend that we highlight her.
Yeah.
And so we are in the process of doing exactly what you have indicated.
That's great. I think, you know, you have to gauge the audience, you know, because certain tactics do not work for certain audiences. And perhaps for this particular audience, stories will be better. Of course, you would be more of an expert because you're there on the front lines, but I think stories really would help them understand what's going on here and what could be, again, you know, made possible.
Very good.
Thank you very much. Good discussion. Who's next?
Student success, the vice president, please.
All right. So this year, in regards to student success, you'll hear me talk about some things in that area, but you'll also hear Vice President Blakey repeat and kind of dovetail some of the work that we've been doing together to really focus on the whole student. So one of the key things we wanted to focus on was persistence and completion. And a lot of work, a lot of little projects and initiatives went into that work. One of the first things that we did this time last year was work with the faculty to ask them to update and rewrite our early alert letters that go out to students, both positive and more nudges to students about what they may need. There's some other intervention strategies. Again, we've been trying a lot, a lot of different things, which I'll talk about on the next slide. One of the things that we've also looked at this year is evaluating our online courses. So courses that have a gap of success from the face-to-face courses, really putting the other plan with the faculty on how we might change the pedagogy of the course or increase the interaction so that we can increase success and maintain the positive success in our online courses, more students take courses online. One of the things that we've learned more and more as we start to look at the numbers and figure out what are the interventions that we need from a persistence standpoint is it's a lot of hard work to get 1% increases. But from fall to winter this year, we're very proud to announce that we had a 2% increase in full-time degree-seeking students. So we're seeing some work there. We've also seen a 9% fall-to-winter persistence increase in students who are aged 20 to 22 years old. Some other things that we've been really engaged in are guided pathways as well as gateways to completion. These are national programs, and the guided pathways, our health faculty have got on board to look at the pathways in which students take to our healthcare programs that have a secondary admission. And VP Blakey will talk more about that. Another national program that we've been very involved in is our Gateways to Completion, which is a program where faculty engage in interventions to look at courses that have high subscription but have also high grades of D, F, Withdraw and Incompletes. And so we have two faculty in our Introduction to Business and our Developmental English who are coming up with some interventions in that area. And there's some success there in regards to an intervention that they've developed called Course Advisors, where there's a Course Advisor who's assigned across all courses. called Course Advisors, where there's a Course Advisor who's assigned across all courses and works with the faculty and the students to triage what those needs might be and help give a warm handoff to those students to other services around campus. Program review, because again, student success starts in the classroom. We have actually initiated a process for program review this year, and I'm pleased to say that all of our programs across campus were reviewed by faculty this year. And we're learning from that process, different things that we might be doing in those areas. And from a learning outcome standpoint, we assessed 11 programs this year, which is a big feat for us from a program assessment standpoint. And it helps us progress in our annual steps for our HLC Assessment Academy completion, which will be a big part of our HLC, our reaccreditation. And then finally, Julie Morrison has been leading us on our reaffirmation of accreditation, and that work has already been launched. All right. So some other things, just to give some highlights of some of those intervention strategies. At some point, a picture of some wonderful students is going to show up on the slide. And it is, there they go, they come right on time. These are our Fall 2017 Scholarship students. So one of the things that we've began to look at is what are groups of students where we're not seeing completion and retention. And although we have a large group of scholarship students, we weren't seeing the retention numbers that we thought we should have in that group. So we invited them in early, in the fall semester with their families. The vice presidents, the deans, met with the students just to welcome them to campus. And we've seen some really good results in that group of students being retained. Again, we've been talking a lot to students and figuring out ways to have more warm handoffs in regards to our wraparound services that go underutilized as it relates to students. So tutoring, counseling, different services that students need, really trying to meet the students where they're at to make sure that those are not barriers for students. We've also evaluated our withdrawal process. Currently, students can withdraw from a class without any intervention from faculty. So we evaluated why students were withdrawing and what would be a different way to do that process that would actually allow students to be advised on what the ramifications of withdrawal are, as well as for faculty to talk to the students about, you know, maybe we can figure out how to help you through, get you a tutor. And we're in the process now of rolling that out with IT. Another big thing that we did internally and externally from a communication standpoint is really promote to students how many credits it really does take to keep momentum to graduate and complete their certificate or degree. So we did a campaign with marketing in regards to 15 to finish, really educating and looking at research around students who take 15 credits a semester. And for many of our students, if they can't take the 15 credits a semester, at least think about that pace when it comes to spring/summer semester and how many credits they should be taking to make up so that they're getting the 60 credits at some kind of pace that is going to help them reach their goals.
Dean Jennings?
Ready. So when we look at student success, we can't just look at success for some. We look at a lens towards equity, providing opportunities for diversity and inclusion to be part of what our students learn about and part of what we do to help them be successful. So part of some of the initiatives that we did over the past year, and I think this goes to Trustee Davis's concerns, are using students to support what we do. So our Minority Ambassador's Program is really about, we've connected with students on campus, African-American students and also Hispanic students, to go back to their high schools when there's events going on, to talk about their experiences here at Washington North Community College. And it's been interesting because I'm not from here, so I've been able to find schools like Arbor Prep and Canton Prep, what are these schools? But have high numbers of students of color in them who end up at WCC. So for me, that outreach has been, I think, successful. So we looked at our African-American enrollment from Fall 2016 to Fall 2017, and it was up 3.2%. And I think some of the work that we've done to get students who just graduated the year before back into the schools, talking to the students about, you know, they can do it, they can be successful here at WCC. As part of the equity lens that we're trying to focus on is our African-American male students. We shared with you at the board presentation a few months ago about the numbers. So with that, we hosted a regional conference with the larger Student African-American Brotherhood Group. They brought about 75 students from other states, including Ohio and Indiana. And with this group, it's been challenging, I should say. But one of the things that's been rewarding is that this group has consistently came once a week. They get my wonderful, I call them motivational Monday emails from me. Some of them don't think they're motivational, but I do. But it's about being intensive and being intrusive with our students and knowing that we care. So I think part of that helped the group that we work with, I love to work with all of our African-American male, but, you know, those who come, working with those students. And they had a 67% retention over fall to winter versus students who were not in the program was 62%. The other piece that is around outreach and access to WCC is our scholarships. As I looked, and I came here about a year ago, looking at what's going on with our students, I noticed that Ypsilanti schools, they didn't have a lot of students who were applying for our scholarships. We give out six, pretty much full ride scholarships, and they were only sending two or three students to be part of the process. So over the last year, we've worked with them, we actually moved from seven, sorry, seven applications to 16 for our scholarships. So we've doubled. So I'm looking forward to seeing those students here in the fall. Next slide, please. So the other piece of what I do is the diversity side. So over the course of the year, we held various events, including our Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration, our International Student Thanksgiving, which is very interesting because we provide traditional Thanksgiving turkey dressing, but the students are asked to bring a dish from their home country, which provides an opportunity for us to learn more about their culture, learn about us being here. If you had the opportunity, and most of us are at graduation, there are students, our international students, who, this becomes their home. And doing these kind of events for them, making them feel at home, helps them be successful. I will say the last picture on the right is Dwayne King. If you've seen on the record a few months back, if you've seen our new billboards, you may see Dwayne. He is an African-American male student who is entering his second year of the nursing program. And through some of the partnerships with Health Sciences, with Dr. Greve, we've been able to hopefully set a record for fall, where we have 20 male students in our nursing cohort for fall, which I think is a record. If not, we're going to break it next year again. So again, wrapping around all those things around access, success, equity, inclusion, so that all of our students can be successful.
The other thing we've done about student success is brought on success coaches. So listed on here is a number of success coaches that we've brought on this year. We have a full-time success coach for our career and technical ed students that's been funded through Perkins. We have a part-time success coach that's working with our developmental reading sequence, which is ACS 107 to 108. We also have one, a success coach that's working with students who are in the developmental English sequence, which is 9091. We have a state grant from the state of Michigan that works with foster youth, that's our REACH program, that she's working with 48 students currently. We've had a partnership for the last couple of years with the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation, and they give scholarships every year to students. And they noticed that without a success coach, that those students have not been successful. They're focusing on first-generation students, students that are poor, students of color. And we have found that with a success coach, the success rates of those students have increased dramatically. And so this, starting right now, the fact we're in the process of hiring, they decided instead of having a part-time coach, that we're actually going to have a full-time success coach to work with those scholar students. And then with Adult Transition, it's a program that we mentioned earlier, that the students who are working through and working with an occupational program while they're in the GED program, they have a success coach that works with those students as well. We also have, next slide, please. We also, as part, you know, we talked about during the retreat, we talked about our first time in any college, the FIDI Act. So we've implemented that students who are FIDI Act must see an advisor. Before, it was kind of optional. We had about 70% of students who saw an advisor. Now they must see an advisor. And we saw that that showed, that improved our retention rates, especially with our largest group, which was our 18-year-olds, which you see increased from 81.5 to 82.4. So again, we're making, that's a really large group, but we made a jump in that. And we also started doing group advising. So when we have our express registration days, which is a really large group, where you have hundreds of students that come in, we started doing some group advising, which helps service those students in a more kind of efficient fashion. So that's been implemented this past year as well. Next slide, please. Dr. Hurns mentioned our guided pathways, and the program that we decided to use that for was our healthcare foundations, which is by far our largest program. So for Fall '17, we had 1,380 students in healthcare foundations. That's a certificate program, and it's for students who have indicated that they are interested in pursuing one of our health programs. And it's basically a certificate program that has all the prereqs for our various health programs. The majority of those students say, I want to be a nurse, because sometimes that might be the only health program that they're aware of. We know that, you know, nursing is a very competitive program to get into. It's difficult. It requires a lot of hard classes. So we know that a lot of those students are not going to be able to access our healthcare, our nursing program. And so we wanted to expose them to additional programs. So Student Services worked with the healthcare faculty. And so now we've developed a course, they've developed a course that basically is an exposure course. So it provides an overview, it's a course that's now required in that healthcare certificate, but it provides an overview for students of all of our healthcare programs. So they can have, you know, what is physical therapy assistance? What is dental assisting? What is pharmacy tech? So it gives them an overview of other health programs and know what those career options are. The other thing that we've done with, you know, again, with nursing, we have a lot of students who apply and may not be able to get in, it's a competitive process, is starting with the Winter 19 class, students who are applying for the nursing program are required to see an advisor. So we designated four advisors who have been specially trained to talk about the point system with the nursing application. And so they meet with the student, they kind of talk about how kind of, how competitive their application is. We have basically an overview of the last five classes that have come in, kind of what it would take to get in. And so that gives the opportunity for that advisor to talk to that student and say, hey, let's think about some other programs that are probably a better fit for you. So I think that's going to be really good for our students.
Through our partnership with the Health Sciences Division and ECD, we've begun working with employers and developing new healthcare programs for high-demand jobs in healthcare. And so on this screen, we have just some of them listed. And the Home Health Aid Program will be up and running this spring/summer. We worked with Kennedy Home Care on that. So we'll be training home health aides for them. And spring/summer also will be up and running with our RN Lab Skills Refresher Course, working with Michigan Board of Nursing for this, because this is a course that nurses that let their license lapse, they have to go through some skills training or recertify. So this will allow them to get their license back through the state of Michigan, as well as nurses that may be stopped practice to have children, to have family, or something like that for other reasons, want to come back into the profession. The Refresher Course is also for them, to let them refresh their skills. And so they'll be able to seamlessly go back to employment. Safe Sitter Certification Program, we're going to run this spring/summer for the first time. It's geared towards 11- to 14-year-olds, so it'll be taught by a registered nurse. They'll learn, it's a medical-based sitter course, so they're going to learn basic first aid, CPR, choking, that type of thing. And then fall, we'll be excited to offer, and probably some of you on the board remember, our LPN to RN program. Well, it's back. There's a high demand in the community for that program. So most of our long-term care settings have LPNs that work in them, because the LPNs typically don't work in hospitals anymore. But they want to be able to work in hospitals because they'll make more money. So we have a, how many do we have on our list? I think nine, we ended up with 94 on a waitlist for it. So we're going to run the first cohort this fall. And so we're pretty excited about that. And then, oh, this was a big hit, the Sterile Processing Certificate Program, worked with U of M and St. Joe's and all of our candidates. We ran our first course in the fall, and then we're running another one now. But everyone had jobs before they graduated from the program, so. The one thing I should mention too, I think is really important, when we say they have jobs in these health careers, their full-time jobs, which means they get full benefits, they get life insurance, things they've never had before. Tuition reimbursement, so it would allow them to go back should they want to further their career. So a lot of benefits with, at U of M and St. Joe's for furthering their education.
And finally, we're continuing to investigate and nurture international opportunities here on campus to enrich the campus environment. As you know, back in October, President Blanca took an extended visit to China. This was at the invitation of two college presidents, the Liaoning Vocational College and the president of Guizhou Chaochung, I didn't say that correctly, but I did my best, Polytechnic Institute. Both of these presidents had visited here in the past and extended an invitation for her to visit their institutions to discuss future collaboration. In addition, she visited colleges and high schools in Shanghai, Liaoning, Shenyang, and Tianjin. Out of that trip came two signed MOUs and some ongoing discussion about possibly sharing some online curriculum back and forth with the two institutions that we signed MOUs with. We're continuing to nurture study abroad. We're building on the success of last year's trip, when we had an interdisciplinary trip to the UK and trips to Peru and Greece. We had about 27 students go in 2017. We have our first partnership trip going to Spain with GEO, with the University of Oregon this year in July. And if that trip is a success, that will be able to run again and be opened up nationwide. So we'll be able to get enrollments from all across the country. Dean Brandon Tucker won a Fulbright Award in October for the International Education Administrator Seminar. He spent, I think, two weeks in Germany studying the German higher education system and looking for potential future collaborations there. And we've had multiple international delegations visit us this past year, including delegations from China, two delegations from France, and a delegate from Japan. And on to academic partnerships with Chris Good.
So academic partnerships happen in two ways, before us and after us. And you've heard some of the before-us part. One of our goals is to, was to engage with local high schools to look at their math departments and work on readiness and preparation so that when students come to WCC, they're not set back into developmental mathematics. So you've heard a number of outreach programs. Nico talked about them, VP Blakely talked about them. But we brought Alex Prep and Placement into the high schools, and our dual enrollment in math increased 9% from winter '17 to winter '18 due to that effort. We're considering a similar partnership with Mylan High School right now. In addition, we added the use of Alex to the Summer Bridge Program, the VIP program. And 11 of the 15 students who participated raised their math level through that program. You heard about the boot camp, that's going to be free for participants. We're focusing this summer on the incoming Ypsilanti Scholarship students, and we're going to use it as a test model so that we can branch out next summer and offer it to more students, so that they can come and start with their college-level math. We also have established some partnerships at high schools in other areas. One we added at YPSY, you heard, was the Introduction to Manufacturing and Childcare. But we also added a whole new level of partnership with Livingston Early Middle College in cybersecurity, computer networking, construction technology, and construction management. On the other end, when we move up to our transfer programs, this year, with the help of all the faculty, mainly in the Arts and Sciences Division, because that's where most of the classes are housed that are impacted by the Michigan Transfer Agreement, we updated all of our general education strands to match the outcomes of the Michigan Transfer Agreement. With the help of faculty, we rewrote the strands, rewrote the outcomes, and we plan to hold assessment activities this fall to see how our students are doing with respect to those new outcomes. And then finally, we have been doing a number of partnerships with, four years in programming, in scholarship, in transfer. The first one would be Mike Gallia and team worked with the University of Michigan to create a Python programming class. So we now offer that course here, and some of their students are taking advantage of that class. We also are kicking off our first STEM Scholars cohort in June with 27 underrepresented minorities who are funded through the LSAMP and SSTEM grants. And then finally, we've had several folks in the math department work on a statewide committee to make sure that our three main math transfer pathways are accepted at four-year colleges across the state. the state. So that's been a huge, uh, amount of progress in that level of conversation.
Institutional agility and responsiveness, we have Joyce Hummel, Claire Sparkleton.
So our first goal with the institutional agility and responsiveness was to plan and deploy the Teaching and Learning Center professional development programming for faculty and staff for the year. As you can see, we now have a nice marketing campaign here with the new TLC, WCC logo. Um, and through this year, we were very successful in holding over a hundred-and-fifty-seven sessions through the year for the faculty to attend. Attendance was upwards of eighteen-hundred-and-twenty people participating in such programs as things on universal design, using media in the classroom, and the most recent and very popular one on augmented and virtual reality. Attendance averaged about twelve people per, um, session, and, um, we now feel that this particular goal has moved into the continuous improvement and completion of the, um, tracking and reporting mechanism stage. So it's fully operational.
Oh, so at the beginning of this, I heard that we should make this as exciting as possible? And, and let me tell you, the part that I get to present about is really exciting, like so exciting, I thought, should I do jazz hands all while I'm doing it? I'm not real sure. Um, so I get to talk about OERs, which are open educational resources, and let me tell you, I get to see students who are using these OER in our classes. Um, when I ask my students, "What kind of difference does the OER make for you?" They say everything to me, from, "I can buy groceries," "I'm paying rent with it," "I can register for another class, so I can crank it up to fifteen," "I can register for another class next semester." Like, this, OERs make such a big difference for them. And we know that not every class fits with an OER, but the ones that do, we are getting the support that we need from administration to be able to bring OERs to our students. So in January, we had this great kickoff. Joyce Hummel and the amazing library staff brought this to us with support of, of VPI Hearns, and, oh my goodness, I had, I heard from other faculty, one of my, um, fellow faculty said, "I didn't really want to consider OER, but after that, I suddenly thought, wow, I should really see if there's an OER for my classes." Um, it, it really helped inspire us. So in fall of twenty-seventeen, um, OERs brought eight-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand dollars and sixty-five dollars in savings for our students. At the, that January kickoff, it was the start of our very first Cohort One. So this was a cohort of faculty that got together with the support of the library, um, to develop OER for our students. And with Cohort One, they added, uh, three-hundred-forty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-two dollars of savings for our students. Now, remember at the beginning when I said, I asked some of my students what they saved, and one of them said, "I could pay rent"? Well, if they were paying, um, eight-hundred dollars rent, if you think of that entire Cohort One, that eight-hundred dollars rent, they could have paid eight-hundred dollars rent for thirty-five years with the amount of money that was saved just through Cohort One. So with that, I mean, jazz hands, right? Like, that's really exciting. So in June, also super exciting is Cohort Two. And so we can think about those savings to our students just really making such a powerful impact on their lives. And so I am so thankful for the support that we've gotten on this. So, thank you.
And I'm grateful for you being one of the people that actually initiated this. So thank you so much.
Jazz hands for you.
Thank you. You are the pioneer.
Oh, Bonnie, too.
And Bonnie, too.
She really started us off, yeah. Thank you.
So our next, um, goal was to strengthen the WCC partnerships in high schools to enhance student college preparedness and readiness for future success. And, um, we've been very excited to announce that the high school dual enrollment online classes, um, from winter of two thousand seventeen to winter of two thousand nineteen increased fifty-two percent to a hundred-and-eighty-seven enrollments. That's really a huge change and increase for us. Um, the GenNet program, Connection Program, is now fully operational. I'm going to turn it over to VP Blakey to speak a little bit about that.
So GenNet is a, is a statewide system that allows high school counselors, it's run by the Genesee ISB, but it's a statewide system that allows high school counselors to go on and find different classes to take. Um, they pretty much have always focused on classes that meet high school graduation requirements, but they kept getting more requir, more requests from high school counselors to say, "It'd be really nice to be able to have some dual enrollment opportunity." So we're the first college that they, um, were able to put our classes up. So, um, we had a little bit, a few technical things on, not our side, their side, but the system is operational now, so all of our fall online classes are up. And so high school counselors can be working with one of their students, and they can go out and, um, register for any of our online classes.
So one of our other programs that we, um, introduced is the Seniors Today and Freshmen Tomorrow Program, um, that we piloted this year with Mylan High School. And this is an information literacy program to help students be prepared for college-level research and college-level, um, uh, coursework. Um, we had a hundred-and-forty students who took part in this, the first part of the two-part session. And then, we live in Michigan, and so the second part got snowed out. That said, we're already, we've already been in touch, and, and Mylan is coming back in the fall, and we're going to be repeating the pilot program with them. Um, they were very excited about the first part of the program as a success. Um, and from that point, then we'll be able to expand that program beyond to the next, um, high schools in the area. We are on target, um, the, um, to ensure the accessibility of online and blended courses based on the universal design and learning principles. Uh, this year, we did an audit of online courses, um, for accessibility, and, um, we found that seven, we were able to, um, complete the audit on a hundred-and-eighty-eight of the, um, courses. Seventeen percent of them were completely, fully compliant. Um, and sixty percent are compliant now with some exceptions that we are being worked on, such as animations and things like that. Ninety percent of the courses are being revamped currently, because they needed to start from the beginning, and they revamped them to, so that they would be ADA compliant. And fourteen percent are, are non-compliant. However, we are in the review process right now, and we've created a process for those to come into compliance during this year. Sixty-eight of our faculty members have been completely trained, have completed the online training for ADA compliance, and that's a really, um, wonderful place for us to be moving forward with this particular program. In addition, twenty-five part-time faculty members have been contracted to work on additional courses. Um, at this point, the college continues to develop their guidelines as we continue to grow, um, forward in this, this area. Our next goal is to scale the collaborative classrooms to accommodate active, project-based group learning for faculty and students. This is a very exciting goal for us, because we have stopped, sort of stopped, took a breath, and then we are re-engaging the faculty and facilities, the deans, and the VPI to create a more cooperative approach to classroom design. Sort of moving away from the one, one style fits everybody, and really looking at the pedagogical practices that are actually used based on the disciplines and the areas that they're in. Um, in redefining this, we have now, uh, completed seventy percent of the classrooms being upgraded to the digital infrastructure by the fall of, of two thousand eighteen. Big, huge first step. Um, two of the collaborative classrooms in the negative, uh, excuse me, the legacy model have been completed, are now in use. We have one flexible classroom being scheduled in the BE Building, one collaborative flex space being, um, scheduled in the GM Building, and it's in the Bailey Library, so I'm quite pleased about that. And one showcase lecture hall in the GM Building, one hybrid instructional lab, and two lecture capture rooms.
And then finally, this year, we have executed a global endorsement to recognize student learning, supporting global awareness and competency. This is actually, um, an initiative that originated through MCCAs collaborative group of, um, colleges who are working together, uh, study abroad and other international issues. It's a group called the, um, Community of Practice for International Issues through MCCA, and a number of colleges work together on a model for a global endorsement. And it does two things. It both recognizes those students that already have a lot of global knowledge and may have global experience and are bringing that to the college, and it's also encouraging students who are here to go get that knowledge and be recognized for it. So the global endorsement is a tool where they can capture that by, um, taking courses with global content, um, documenting global experience they may have, such as study abroad, or, um, perhaps, um, living with, with someone from another country, having, um, you know, having a host family, something like that, and also taking part in events or activities on campus or in the community that have a global fa, flavor. And it's a point-based activity that they can do throughout their time here at WCC, and as they accumulate points, um, they, they come closer and closer to an endorsement that after a hundred points, they can have put on their transcript, that they can share with an employer or with a transfer institution, showing that they are globally competent. And so something that was done with input from VPI Hearns, or actually VPI Abernathy and VPI Hearns, um, the Curriculum Committee Chair and the Faculty Global Committee. And the plan is to do a targeted rollout to our scholarship students in the fall, and, um, then enact it for transcripting. And on to Priority Seven, our first part of Priority Seven, which, funding and resources, which is scholarships, and Phil Snyder.
Uh, the foundation is engaged in a multi-year endeavor to increase scholarship and support services that the college and the foundation can offer to our students. We've been listening, and we are becoming very intentional in how we're operating. We've listened to, uh, our colleagues and the board and Foundation Board, and have really realigned the work, the activities, the goals of the foundation to match the retention and completion goals of the college. So by doing so, we've employed some different activities and some different methods. I hired a major gift officer, who is very deliberate, as I am, in who we see, who we talk to and what we talk to them about. We've also changed our message. The message now is very much in line with what the college is attempting to do. So when we talk in, in, online, or in letters, or at events, or in person, we're trying to help everyone understand that the reason the foundation exists is to help students to succeed. And that may not have always been the case, but it's now, over the last year and a half, the way we talk about it. So being very intentional, changing the message, and adding a critical staff has allowed us really to make some great success in just a year. Uh, we're up forty-four percent in scholarship funding this year. We've closed thirteen endowments in the last three months. We're thirty-six percent increased over, year-over-year in our overall fundraising. We're very, very pleased that we were able to start the Student Emergency Fund. We've talked a lot about the barriers that keep students from achieving, food shortages and transportation issues, uh, medical dental bills, and rent has really been one that's reared its ugly head over the last six months. Um, we've started the fund using some of the extra money we've raised, and without doing a lot of promotion, because we really can't do that much right now until we build up our, our, um, endowment and our, the money we have to give away. But in just a short time, we're just under eighty students giving away eighteen thousand dollars, and we are tracking the retention of those students, and we'll come back to report on that year-over-year to let you know how those students are doing. But we've seen, um, that there's been, um, counterintuitively, keeping students in school. Something like a blown tire, or something like, uh, fall behind one month on my rent really can destroy and make that barrier impossible for a student to get over. So we say, "If we can do five-hundred dollars and get them out of there, we'll go right to the apartment complex. We'll vet it internally. We have a good system for that that involves our counseling and, and other people on campus. We look at it, and if we can help, we go and pay directly. No, no money goes to a student." But we think that's really adding some great value in helping keeping students in school. And for the first time, with money we're raising, for the first time in our history, we awarded more than one thousand, one thousand nineteen, to be exact, scholarships to our students. So the work we're doing, I think, over the next three years, two more years, will ma, match that goal of helping to support the students, both college and the foundation doing its work together.
I was thrilled with graduation when Jamie Burr asked the students to contribute to the foundation. Um, I've always wondered why nobody did that before. Um, and it was, he did it very well. It wasn't like, "Give us half your money, or your life, or your firstborn child," or something. But, you know, it was twenty-eighteen, so twenty dollars and eighteen cents, if you can, I mean, he made it real. And, you know, I think, uh, that's an important request to make.
If I could, uh, they're, they're coming in, they're online and in the mail already, and a consortium of donors led by Jamie is matching that dollar-for-dollar. So that really is going to be, I think, a great start to build a culture of philanthropy and affinity here. They went here. This is not, they just went here. They went here, be proud of that, and help give back. So thank you for putting that out.
Sam Daultier, Professional Development, Organizational Health.
Thank you. From, from a human resources perspective, of course, I'm happy to, and pleased to, to say that professional development for our staff, uh, is a strategic priority for us here. Um, and, uh, to help drive a professional development and, and establish a continuous learning culture, we established really what's a foundational goal. You heard, uh, my colleague, uh, referenced the Teaching and Learning Center, and, and, uh, from a foundational perspective, we established a goal to, a goal to help support, uh, establishing TLC as, as, or, or drive its operational, uh, piece, uh, by establishing a, uh, incentive program that, uh, recognizes attendance and encourages attendance in professional, and participation in professional development activities through the TLC. And I'm pleased to report, as the slide suggests, since our recognition program has been established, what we've seen, what we've been able to measure is we've had a fifteen percent increase in professional development activities, uh, through April two thousand eighteen, and a hundred-and-seventy-five certificates of completion awarded in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Now, that's, that's really kind of just a baseline at this point to help measure moving forward. We want to really continue to drive participation and utilizing the, the Teaching and Learning Center. Um, the next slide is really more substantive than it is foundational, in, in looking at, next slide. Um, we, we really wanted to make sure, now that we've built it, that folks will come and participate. And so the challenge for us is to make sure we get the return on the investment and the participation in our programs. So you'll see, we've highlighted, um, some of the things in terms of the substance of the programs that we're offering. For our OPT folks, we've established for the first time a, a formal professional development program, and it's really kind of a pathway that's, pathways that are focused on diversity, inclusion. What we're doing is support the student experience and student success. On the supervisory side of the fence, where when we talk about leadership development, which is an aspect of professional development, we've developed a, a supervisory skills series that really will focus on the fundamentals, what it means to be a supervisor and a leader, and how, how are you effective in those roles. Um, the other thing that's noteworthy, and this is both foundational and substantive, is, you know, we did formalize the expectation with our bargaining partners, both with the OPT and the WCC EA, um, that we would have sixteen hours of, of dedicated professional development for our staff, uh, on an annual basis moving forward. So, um, you know, we'll continue to update the, the board as we move forward, but we're excited about where we're at and, and having achieved the goals that we set out.
One of our priorities under, um, Professional Development, Organizational Health, was establishing, uh, WCC Public Safety Campus Resource Officers. And so, per the board's approval, um, we were, um, recognized by MCOS as a, um, law enforcement agency. Um, Chief Scott Hilton was our first law enforcement officer. Uh, we've also brought on Matthew Lied, who's our sterile supervisor. He started April sixteenth. Um, we've also established our, the state-required Public Safety Advisory Committee, and we've also had, um, two, we have additional public safety vehicles on campus, and they've been rebranded, and you can see our new badge that's on, it's on, um, the screen. We've also established, well, we, a campus-wide advisory committee that has eleven members, and you can see it has, um, instructional faculty, counselor, OPT, representatives from facilities maintenance, and academic dean, student. maintenance, and academic dean, student, WTMC, public safety, student services. And so that 11-person committee has been doing all of the review of applications and interviews. We are finding it challenging. We're, you know, we have two, we're hiring two additional officers. We have found it challenging. There's over 125 agencies across the state that are looking for officers as well. So this is kind of a nationwide issue, but we are only going to hire stellar. My committee hears from me all the time, we're going to hire stellar officers. So we are, we started the interview process, and we're going to continue to do that. And so we're hoping to have those officers identified and onboard before the fall semester. And also, Chief Hilden and his staff have been, over the last winter semester, we had, he had several presentations for students. We do personal safety, which includes alts, but it has a more broader view of personal safety even for like going on dates and being careful with the drink and just, you know, personal equipment and everything on campus. But we also have done specific alts training for staff across the campus throughout the semester as well.
Workforce Development, Michelle.
Well, certainly helping students to have opportunities for experiential learning placements is key to student success in the workforce. And I'm happy to tell you that we've increased our experiential learning placements over last year at the same time to 70, which is 50% over 2016-17. So Barb Pousworth has been a busy, busy person at the college. And part of the way that we've done that is we've also, we've partnered with Michigan Works Southeast to be able to expand our placement opportunities for our students with not only the employers that we partner with, but also the employers that they partner with as well. In addition to that, we established experiential learning metrics and a tracking system. And obviously, that's important, you know, for identifying not only how many placements were we able to afford students, but also to track to see if they were successful and those types of things. So that is in place now. Cheryl is here today, well, she was here today, I don't think she's back there now. But Cheryl Harvey is the Director or the Assistant Director of Career Services. And one of the things that she did is she reached out to J.C. Penney's. And J.C. Penney's has an American Suit Up Day. And so Cheryl partnered with J.C. Penney's, and we allowed our students to come in, J.C. Penney's did, after, I don't know, I think it was a Sunday afternoon. And we hosted one in the fall and one in the winter semester. We had over 300 students that participated, and they were able to purchase interview suits on sale for less than they would pay for those suits on the rack. So that was a great opportunity for our students looking for jobs. And then we also created an online portfolio, folio system for our students, because so many of them have portfolios that they want to demonstrate their work, and their credentials need to be in a place where they can be put online to share with employers. We ended up putting that in place for them this winter. In addition to that, with regard to skilled trades, Marilyn Dunham is excellent, Dr. Dunham, I should say, since she has earned her doctorate. She established a new partnership with the OPCMIA, which is the Operative Plasters and Cement Masons International Association. They are another national trade union that we've added to the campus. They will be here, 125 of them, in June. They won't be using lab space, but they'll just be using classroom space primarily in the GL Building to conduct leadership training amongst their union membership across the country. In addition to that, we developed and submitted a proposal to the Electrical Training Alliance. The Electrical Training Alliance hasn't been on our campus doing a lot of work over the past few years. And right now, their partnership with the University of Michigan and with the city of Ann Arbor is up for renewal. And so we were asked to put in a proposal to be able to keep them in Ann Arbor and also on our campus, back to our campus to do a great amount of training. So we ended up doing that. We have not heard yet what the decision is. We probably won't hear until this summer when they're back in Ann Arbor. We also projected over 100% apprenticeships by spring/summer. So again, Marilyn Dunham is a one-person show on this. And we wanted to increase by 50% our apprenticeships. Well, we came close. We got 95 instead of 100. But Marilyn is doing this all by herself, working in business and industry to establish these apprenticeships throughout Washtenaw County. And she's just done a marvelous job, so I need to give her kudos for that. We implemented an IT apprenticeship program for the first time, and that was with U of M Hospital. And Marilyn's also negotiating with two other medical groups now in terms of adding IT apprenticeships as well. We signed a five-year sprinkler fitter contract, so five more years, they're going to be on the campus. We launched a UA Associate's Degree Completion Campaign. And the final thing that we did is we kind of projected, we were hoping to get to 20%, increase in the number of students that received career services on the campus. And we exceeded that. We got to 40%. And we went up to 1,030 students in terms of our unduplicated headcount for reaching out for placement services over last year. So I'm proud to report that. In addition, we ended up implementing three new STEAM offerings for our summer camp. So these STEAM offerings include construction, additive manufacturing, and drones. So that's for our K through 12 students, or community enrichment. And we also were able to position WCC to become a national education and training partner, especially in this mobility sector. We continue to position the college. This past year, we established a community college mobility consortium, the first in the country, between three community colleges, Macomb, Washtenaw, and Wayne County Community College District. We also signed a partnership agreement with the American Center for Mobility. We developed 63 non-credit mobility classes that are primarily online that we're delivering. And we held the first community college smart city symposium in the country. And I'll turn it over to Valerie.
In the areas of health and nursing, we've been working for the past several years, and most of you are aware, because we spoke about it, to foster a culture of innovation and excellence in the health sciences areas. And so some of, just some of the, to give you some examples, we revised the entire nursing curriculum. It's now a concept-based curriculum, which is best practice, but we're one of the first in Michigan to have this. Developed a partnership between health sciences and ECD, which I spoke about a little earlier. We now have credit in non-credit pathways in nursing and allied health programs. Currently, we're undergoing construction of the TI simulation labs, two of them in the TI building, and also renovation of a large nursing lab. And renovations will continue for the next two years in the TI building as we get ready to prepare for a center of excellence. And I have a little timeline on the right-hand side that kind of tells you about the center of excellence, how we're moving along. Our final application was submitted in April. We're hopeful to know in July if we've been designated as a center of excellence. And if so, then in August, we can officially use the national designation and the National League of Nursing logo.
Active Priority Seven, Funding and Resources, Finance in IT, and now we qualify facilities.
Very good. Hello there?
So we used our budgeting process as a way to identify the specific department of goals that were striving to meet classroom needs, both in terms of equipment, every area built out of a five-year plan. And then we also looked at furniture needs, and finally started to build out a five-year furniture replacement plan within the classrooms. And the budget that is going to be before the board this evening offers an increase in funding for those areas of about a half a million dollars from what had been in the past. In addition to that, the facilities area's been working hard to build out a five-year plan for deferred maintenance that also focuses on those key areas of service to help support our academic and student success areas. And as a result of that, the budget also proposes that we increase the deferred maintenance, campus fair maintenance area by another $750,000. That was all funded internally through the prioritization of all the needs across campus. And the budget the board is going to be presented with tonight supports that. In total, that's about a 40% increase for those areas from the prior year. And it's the strong work of the campus community to identify those priorities, those needs that help really rise to the top in terms of funding requests. Second area is for IT. This is a strategic area in support of student success and four key areas. One was the IT assessment that brought to the board the recommendation which you approved with the partnership with Campus Works, which really leads the way for us to build a master plan for technology that supports our student, supports the classroom. And that is very much in progress now. And then three key software areas. You know, the first one has to do with our website. We've been working very hard on that for about two years now, making very strong progress on that. And the website is targeted to come up later this fall. And again, its focus is around meeting the needs of the student, both prospective and current students, and how do we best serve them through the website tools that we're offering. The second area is our, the CRM tool. The board had approved that at the last meeting. We have executed those contracts. And our new CRM tool through Target X is going to be online in October. And then last but not least, our ERP system, Banner, has a lot of self-service tools for students. And Banner has offered a brand-new set of releases, which is a very significant undertaking by the college to migrate from our old version to our new version. And we are on track to have those up and running by the end of the year.
I see the testing of the new website for August and September. Can board members have access? I'm guessing it's going to be a site that there's a backdoor in for the testers. If we could maybe have an opportunity to look at it or to navigate it, just to see if we see anything that is important to board members.
Thank you.
When that comes up in August.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. In the facilities area, we have a goal to achieve a 15% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from our 2008 Climate Action Plan baseline. Campus achieved a 15.92% decrease over that 2008 baseline in 2017. While meeting this reduction target, we are also able to bring CC Step funded equipment online in the classrooms and still decrease energy uses across the campus. For alternative energy development, a goal is 25% of the electrical needs and also planning to move toward a chemically free landscapes. Both of these are continuing programs. The implementation of an alternative energy development agreement was deferred pending the arrival of new facilities, Vice President, me. So as soon as we're able to move forward to that program and make a sound decision, we'll do that. As far as the green landscape is concerned, we are now awarding a contract for the 2018 growing season that will convert 30% of the campus, maintain turf grass to a organic lawn care methods, not using chemicals. Finally, our last initiative to promote sustainability and implement energy conservation, also a continuing program. Our goal for 2017 and 2018 was the completion of the STARS Sustainability Tracking Assessment and Rating Systems Self-Reporting Framework for Higher Education. That data has been submitted. Our initial score was 30.25, which exceeded our goal of 25 points needed for a bronze rating.
Good evening. We kicked off the master plan planning process in April 2018. We have a 22-member working group, leadership team, representing faculty, staff, and three trustees as well were on that committee. Trustee Davis, trustee Milliken, and trustee Fleming. We'll begin gathering faculty and staff input and the local community as well in the fall, and with a final master plan completed in April of 2019.
Last but not least.
So Mike has been very involved in the digital badges. We'll talk a little bit about that and give you the history on that project.
This whole idea started about six months into Dr. Blanca's tenure, seven years ago, where we presented the idea of having some sort of digital credential that students can post to their social and professional networks. And about four or five years ago, we implemented this on a very small scale in one of the courses, CIS 100, through Pearson, where we actually have a co-branded badge, and I'm sure you've heard about that in the past anyway. And we've got hundreds of, I guess now into thousands of these badges all over social media now. As of last fall, we are now issuing digital credentials for our certificates and degrees. I can't emphasize how important this is, particularly for our students, because if you look at networks like LinkedIn, this is where employers are going now to look for candidates. And that's, that would be, that's an excellent place and where our students are actually posting these digital credentials. So it's sort of been a long journey, but we're finally arrived at the destination.
As Mike said, we're now awarding the digital badges. We've issued 3,000 so far. A thousand of our students have downloaded the digital badges and certificates, and to date, 250 have shared those on their social media across LinkedIn and Facebook and other social media platforms. Some of the other things that we want to talk about are the executing and increasing our presence at major events. We were the only community college at the North American International Auto Show this year. This is the second year we were there. We were in the automobility exhibit hall. We also participated in the Mackinac Policy Conference last year, and will be there again this year. We did a hosted session last year focusing on building the pipeline to, for mobility talent. As VP Mueller talked about, we hosted a symposium on clean cities, our Clean City Symposium, and the first community college in the nation to do that. And our Free College Day continues to be very successful. In fact, we had a 40% increase in registrations in this last Free College Day event we had. Also, with respect to the website, the UI UX design and development is complete, and we're in the process of migrating the content into the new CMS platform. And we're also developing the online tools to prepare for the testing that VP Johnson talked about a few minutes ago. We've also completed branded guidelines, which are now on our website, so we can, they're shareable in between departments. We've drafted marketing and communications plans. We have a social media guidelines also available on our website, so we could share those with departments that are interested in starting new social media channels. And we've augmented our online communication site. So our news and events site, we now have, we've augmented that with photos, so we've got a photo gallery where media can actually download photos that relate to press releases we put out. We've also put links into like the president's page, mission, vision, and values, on-the-record archive, and we have our contact for our PR department, so media can get ahold of the right contacts.
Welcome, any questions?
I do have a question. And this is going way back, so I saved it so we can just get through all of it. So forgive me, this is reference to the LPN. I just had a question. My former employer was in healthcare and worked at LTAC facility, Long-Term Acute Care. And in that particular area where I worked in Texas, a number of the healthcare facilities were weeding out the LPNs. Having them to, if they wanted to maintain their career in healthcare, they had to go back and get their RN degree. My concern is, because I, you know, I've been back in Michigan four years in August, no no longer in the healthcare field, has any of the healthcare facilities demonstrated any shift in that career path for the nurses where they are only zeroing in on our ends to staff, to be staffed at their facilities?
Yes.
And if so, where does that position us because we have LPN programs and it's so successful? Or is it just a regional thing throughout the states that, you know, that are doing...
Typically, what happens now, LPNs are not hired into hospitals. It's very rare to find an LPN in a hospital. So our LPNs go into long-term care settings, assisted living. That's where you'll see our LPNs working. So if they want to work in a hospital setting, make more money, they have to go back to get their RN. So what you event, when LPNs were phased out over about 10 years, greater than 10 years ago, in the hospitals locally here in Washtenaw County, what happened is they turned them into tech positions, patient care techs.
Okay.
And so they just totally did away, any of the LPNs that they had at that time were converted over into a patient care tech, and they hired no more LPNs. So it's really important for those LPNs in our community who, there's still LPN programs. University of Toledo, we have them around us, Schoolcraft. So there's still our LPN programs, but they know essentially they're going to be working in long-term care settings. So the only option they have to grow and to move to a hospital and such is to go back and get their registered.
So it could be for those who are wishing to elevate to the hospital setting, have it to be like a stepping stone, if you will, I guess?
Absolutely. Or as well as, I shouldn't say that they're all going to move into the hospital. Some of them are LPNs in long-term care setting, but want to be the director of nursing or want to be the charge nurse at the long-term care setting.
Okay. So it's not a dead-end deal?
Yeah. Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. Well, good. And then, because like I said, when I was listening to you speak of the success and just the nursing program across the board, you know, I want to ensure, be assured that no matter which avenue a nursing student would like to take their career through the courses that we offer here, that they have opportunities, they have options rather than opportunities, but they have options in which direction they want to go.
Yes. That's important. And I should mention that there is one hospital, the VA, still has some LPNs. And they approached me a couple of years ago and said that they would, if we developed an LPN to RN, they would pay for their LPNs to come back to school to get their RN.
Oh, that's good. That's good to know.
Yeah. So that hopefully will be happening too.
Well, thank you.
All right. Well, I just want to say, I think all of your reports were just excellent reports. Lot of in-depth thought and preparation has gone into these reports, and I really, really appreciate it, and I'm quite sure the Board appreciates it too. So we're going to move on.
I just have two quick questions.
Yes.
Going back, as you did, I didn't want to interrupt them. How many advisors do we have now with all the students being required to do that?
Oh, yeah, six or seven.
Okay, full-time or, okay. Are there part-time ones, too?
We have a few, yep, few part-timers.
Okay.
I'll count, and then I'll tell you a number.
Okay, fine. And my other question has to do with the master plan. Did we hire this company in Chicago or wherever it was to do the big master plan?
Yes.
Whoever.
Yes, we did hire the company that, actually you and trustee Nivarti were part of the selection committee. Yes, we did. We had hoped that we would be able to start that sooner, but we had no idea at the time that Damon Flowers was leaving. So with him leaving, we kind of put the contract, we didn't terminate the contract, we just stopped it, put it on a hold. Correct. And now we're back engaging with them. So all the aspects that we talked about at the time is what we're implementing.
Okay. So they're here, they're...
They have been here, yes. They're not here right now, but they've been here to meet with us. And actually, they are the two consultants that met with the trustees and the group. They were at that meeting with the original team. And the Board will have input also. I mean, this, a master plan's all-inclusive, so we're going to be looking for input from everyone. And there is a, I'll make it fast because I know you guys want to go home before 2:00 AM. But there is, Julie has done some research on future trends, things that we need to be aware of, think about, and I'm encouraging everyone to read about what's going on in education. Not, don't forget, a master plan's not about just, it's not for today. It's for the next five years, 10 years, 15 years. So to look, take a futuristic approach to our idea generation. Okay?
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. We're going to go to Tab B, and the recommendation is that the Board approve the personnel recommendations as listed. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Oh, yes. Are you kidding? How many, do we know how many years Terry Herrera was here? She's leaving.
About 17.
Seventeen.
About 17.
Seventeen. Okay. I know she's been here for a long time. I have some other questions, but they can wait.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're going to go down to Tab C, Financial Reports. It's a recommendation that the Board receive the financial reports for April 2018 as follows: General Fund, Deferred Maintenance Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule Investments Funds. Do I hear a motion?
Support. Move. Move the motion.
Support. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Polls? Go down to Tab D, Facilities Development Report. Vice President Allen?
Yes. This month's Facilities Development Report is presented of note on that long-listed projects, the Transportation Capital Project. We got feedback from the State Budget Office about some minor revisions they wanted to be done. We finished those, got the initial submitted package back to them, received very well, and the State Budget Office has forwarded the project to the Joint Committee with their positive recommendations. So now we're waiting to see what the legislative process is going to do. Elsewhere in the list of note, the Parking Structure Waterproofing and Joint Placement Contract is going as planned. We do anticipate being able to reopen the parking structure by June 15th. We started the Nursing Simulation and Skills Lab, expect an August completion for that one, so that's usable for the fall semester. And we just received bids back for the campus-wide pavement joint sealings. That was much lower than anticipated, so we will be able to accelerate our joint sealing campaign over the next five years ahead of what we expected. So that'll be good for the pavements campus-wide.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go and remarks from the Board. Anyone have any remarks? I do. And I'm just going to say this, the graduation, two things. The honors graduation was very, very nice. A lot of enthusiastic people. They were, it was just exciting and talking with students, always ask them, what do you plan to do? And some are going into print, some nursing, some want to go into film. I mean, all kinds of fields and occupations. And one person said they just didn't know yet. So, but then Saturday was the graduation at the Convocation Center Eastern, and that was just really exciting. Our speaker that we had, Jamie Burr, from the foundation, did an excellent job in just speaking about, he was very appreciative of receiving the award, but really appreciative of the school and how he took a class here, and I believe it was calculus, so that he can go on to another school. And so he understood a lot of what the community college is about and has been a strong supporter of us. I think right on that Sunday, it was the most, I mean, the other two were just great, but Sunday was the most exciting for me, and I almost didn't go. Was it, oh, Saturday, excuse me, Saturday. I almost didn't go, but President Blanca said, are you going to go? I said, no, I don't know. She said, well, why don't you come on? And this is for the nurses' penning. It was just outstanding. It really was. I counted 46 students. They were so excited, they were crying. And what was so interesting about it is that there's a ribbon, and there's a pin in the ribbon, and each student was matched up with either their parent, their spouse, their children, that draped this ribbon around their necks. And it was just very, very touching to see this and how excited they were that they were graduating. There were three students who spoke on student reflections of their journey. And these are all, pretty much majority of them are parents, because you saw their kids with them. Single parents and with their parents, their significant other, their parents. It was just really, really touching. And they talked about the gratitude of the college, and the college was there for their needs, and the instructors were there. I mean, they really, really were just so supportive of the instructors and how much they really appreciated. There's two people that I just want to say, Teresa, Dr. Teresa Bucy was the moderator, and they were really excited that she was talking to them, and Dr. Valerie Greaves. And it was just exciting to be a part of that ceremony. I really appreciated that. That's it for me. Anybody else? Okay. So now we're going to go down to the President's remarks.
Well, actually, you've really pretty much said what I want to say. commencement was wonderful. Thanks, thank you to all of the faculty, staff, and the Board, everyone who does so much to make a student successful. Thank you. And Dawn Procasini's memorial was beautiful. That was on Sunday, and that was really beautiful. So I'd like to thank Patrick Downey and Phil Snyder for doing such a wonderful job to honor that great woman and that wonderful family. And last, we were on the front page, oh, wow, of the Ann Arbor News, but not only the Ann Arbor News, the Muskegon Chronicle. Don't you love this kind of stuff? Oh, two Muskegon Chronicles. Would you give one for everybody? Oh, the Kalamazoo Gazette. The Jackson Citizen Patriot.
Wow.
And the Grand Rapids Press. And I'm going to tell you right now, I am friendless at the MCC. Okay? But other than that, we're highly competitive. I'm in all their areas, I'm not...
What was the content of our exposure?
Oh, this is Elizabeth. Oh, this is Emily, rather. This is the student that worked in the auto industry. You met her, remember?
I know Emily.
She works, yeah.
It's about her?
Really nice.
The auto show.
The auto show, Emily.
Emily was great.
Yeah. Really, really nice.
Thank you. Brandon?
Good job. And can I just say one more thing? I know we want to go. These reports represent a lot of work. Some things, like, you know, we said, when you heard that we started the certificate, the idea of having a badge on a certificate six years ago, it took six years to do that. Not because it took six years because that, because, you know, the faculty member didn't want to do it or they were putting it on the back burner, but there's so much involved to credentialing something that things take, some things take a long time. So, and a lot of work and a lot of focus. So I would like to, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'd like to thank my team, the strategic planning team, the priority team, the leadership team for everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. We're going to Old Business, Tab E. This is the action item. Recommendation for the Board to approve a construction contract for John Dar Mechanical of Ann Arbor, Michigan as mechanical contractor for the Energy Center Pump Replacement Project in the amount of $374,900, contingent upon the college administration obtaining a satisfactory contract with the firm. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? It's been discussed. Okay. Just one sec. Make sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a roll call.
Oh, roll call. Yep. Good. Chairman McHorn? Yes. Vice Chair Comey? Yes. Secretary Davis? Yes. Trustee Nivarti?
Yes.
Trustee Higginson? Yes. Tab F, Resolution to Participate in IT Clemus Agreement. It's the action item. Recommendation to the Board to approve the following resolution. Whereas the Courts and Law Enforcement Management Information System, Clemus is a multifaceted regional public safety information management system operated and maintained by the Oakland County Department of Information Technology and is comprised of many software applications. And whereas Clemus allows public safety agencies to share data and improve the delivery of public safety services, realizing lower costs and improved efficiency. And whereas the Washtenaw Community College Public Safety Department desires to function as an active member of Clemus, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the President to execute the IT Clemus Agreement with Oakland County for law enforcement purposes, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the President and her respective designees to perform all acts and deeds and to execute and deliver all contracts, instruments, and documents required by this resolution that are necessary, expedient, and proper in connection with the IT Clemus Agreement and the ongoing administration of the IT Clemus software. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please. Vice Chair McHorn? Yes. Chair Comey? Yes. Trustee Nivarti?
Yes.
Secretary Davis? Yes. Trustee Nivarti?
Yes.
Trustee Higginson? Yes. Going to Tab G. The recommendation is that the Board approve the 2018, 19, and three-plus-one proposals as listed. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion?
Good question.
Yes.
The first two are those three-plus-one? Or are those just new programs?
Oh, just new programs. Okay.
And then after that, they're three-plus-one and they actually designate a university we're working?
Correct. Those ones that are listed, listed with those universities.
Do we need to make any sort of a change to the resolution in order to recognize that those aren't three-plus-one?
No, the recommendation was for new programs and the three-plus-ones. It doesn't say that, though. That's the problem.
I reckon...
You mean initially last month it did list it. I don't know. You mean, you're saying in the resolution?
I would say that we approve these changes to programs, including the three-plus-one proposals.
Not changes, but recommendation for new programs.
New programs.
For new programs.
New programs, and just say, including the three-plus-one proposals.
Yes. And the three-plus-one programs.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see, new programs and?
And, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So there's an amendment to the resolution?
So usually, we do not take 3+1s to the Board for approval. But so, I'm sorry, that was an error. We just, really, usually, that's just-
Well, they're new programs.
-office kind of thing that we do. But since they are in this motion, I think we should approve them tonight, as you're suggesting.
Sure.
Okay. Yes, I do. So there's a motion to amend the recommendation for the Board to approve the 2018, 19 program-
New programs.
New programs.
18, 19, new program, to include new programs and 3+1 proposals as listed. Perfect.
Sure. Is that a friendly amendment?
Yes. That's a friendly amendment.
Okay, so then we can go directly to the motion.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So.
Good job.
Yep. Okay. Tab H.
Yes.
Resolution to approve the 2018, 19 tax levy rate for general operations. The recommendation is that the Board approve the 2018, 19 tax levy of 3.3978 mils for operations as submitted. The 3.3978 mils will generate approximately $55,620,334 of tax revenue. Do I get a motion?
I move approval.
Support. Any discussion? Yes.
I just want to state for the record and the viewing public that this is the, basically the tax levy that's been approved by the voters and will, under the headly provisions, there may be adjustments made to make sure that people aren't unduly, their taxes aren't duly raised beyond what they've already voted in favor of. And I know, I say this because we had somebody speaking, the public speaking last time about raising the taxes, but I do want to thank the community for being so supportive of the Community College. And it just feels really great to be on a board of a college that really merits the support of the voters. And regularly, when we go back for mileage renewals, we see broad support across the county. And it makes me proud to be on the Board of Trustees when I see that kind of support for the college.
Thank you. Vanessa?
Chair McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Mokan?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Tab I, approval of the 2018, 19 general fund operating budget. The recommendation is the Board review the 2018, 19 budget plan as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Just, the property tax line will change, right? From 52 to 55?
The 55 million is the gross tax revenue. Then there's money that's like for the N- or D-DA and refunds and stuff. So that's the gross tax revenue. This is what we estimate the net tax revenue to be.
Thank you.
Vanessa?
Chair McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Mokan?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Now, we're going to new business and this is, tab J is discussion. Proposed approval of 2018, 19 faculty sabbaticals. Vice President Hearns?
So before you have, you have a list of sabbaticals that had been submitted and approved by the sabbatical committee that we present to the Board for approval. There is a mixture of both fall and winter sabbaticals presented.
Any discussion? Yes.
How many applicants were there? Hmm, I want to say three, four, five, six. This was, this was the pool of applicants.
Okay.
There were-
Maybe one.
Two extra.
Two extra, yeah.
Okay.
I just also wanted to note, I mean, it's kind of, Kim Jones is both a teacher in the English department and a lawyer, teaching in the criminal justice department. So the sabbatical kind of puts her in the English department, but then the description says, well, what's she doing doing that? So I just, I'll clarify that.
Yeah, I thought, I found it very interesting to read this. Yes.
I suspect she'll go to medical school next, but that's-
Yes.
I just want to enthusiastically support all of these, but I want to call out Matthew Zacharias and our digital media arts department is tremendous. I think it's a world-class video and film production department. And it looks like we will be able to launch a new course as a result of this. And I also want to call out Juan Redondo's proposed proposal for his sabbatical and hope that, especially after the presentation of our priorities, that this can lead to some more partnerships with some educational opportunities in Spain or other parts of Europe for our students.
Okay, we're going to tab K, discussion and possible action. And this is approval of non-motorized path easement-
Do we need a vote on this?
No.
No, it's a discussion only.
Okay.
Approval of non-motorized path easement to Washington County Parks and Recreation, Vice President Allen.
Yes.
Yes, may I just, once you hear the explanation, if you think you would like to approve this tonight, it would be advantageous so we could get started on this project. So I'm just gonna say that ahead of time, but go ahead.
Are you talking about the motorized? The motorized, oh, yeah.
The Diane McKnight-Morton sidewalk.
Okay.
The southeast Michigan Council of Governments awarded a grant to Washington Community College in 2017 to construct the non-motorized pathway campus with assistance from the Machine Department Transportation and Washington County Road Commission. The .6-mile shared use path was constructed along the west side of the Huron River Drive from Park Road to the college's main entrance. The construction work will be bid awarded and facilitated jointly by MDOT and the WCCRC. One of the conditions of the grant is that an easement needs to be granted to an entity other than WCC. The easement should be granted to the Washington County Parks and Recreation Commission. Both MDOT and the Washington County Road Commission are not interested in receiving the easement. County Parks and Road Commission and WCCRC's legal council both reviewed and approved the agreement as to legal form, so it is my recommendation that the Board of Trustees authorize the execution of easement by President Blanca or her visiting.
Do I want to hear a motion?
I move that we take action on this tonight.
Is there support? Support.
Support.
Any further discussion on this?
Do we need two votes? One to move it to an action item and then a second vote on the item?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
No. Okay. How long will this project take? Just real quick.
How long will the project take?
I'd estimate about a month of construction once I get that part. We don't know yet when MDOT is gonna finally finish leasing the money and actually execute the construction contract. And part of the purpose of getting easement done now is that we don't want to be the holdup in the process.
I have a question too, just don't, is this going to be with concrete or?
Asphalt.
Asphalt?
Yes.
I was afraid of that. Okay. Okay. All right, roll call.
Chair McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Mokan?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
We're going down to tab L.
Can I ask one more question about this, even though we just passed it? Does this mean we'll have to remove the snow on it every winter?
No, we will not be doing the maintenance on that.
That's why I bring the easement.
Okay. Good point. Awesome. Contract award for lobby furniture upgrade project. This is a discussion.
Discussion, the lobby spaces around campus serve as a gateway to our buildings and first points of entry for public, students, staff, and visitors. In November of 2017, an inventory and condition assessment was conducted. It was determined that most areas on campus did not have an adequate number or type of seats, and the seats that did exist are generally in poor condition. Spaces were prioritized, appropriate layouts, furnishings, and finishes were selected to complement existing facility design. This work was identified as the priority for the Capital Furniture Fund that was recently created and approved by the Board. This project includes the replacement of lobby furniture on the second floor of the Student Center Building, the first and second floor of the Business Education Building, the first floor of Technical Industrial Building, third floor of the Gunderson Myron Building, and the first, second, and third floors of the Crane Global Arts Building. Functional seating identified, or functional seating capability identified areas will increase by 53% overall. In May 2018, vendor provided final quotation with all selected items, including finishes. KIA of Green Bay, Wisconsin provided the quotation in accordance with campus design standards. They proposed contract awards for $177,531.81.
I have a question. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question, yes.
Let's see, is this the one, let's see, is this the one that has the picture to go along with what the furniture looks like?
Yes.
Okay, so my, there it is. Man, that looks great. So these cubicles, open workspaces, would we have to provide outlets if this is what we're going for? Or is this picture just an example of the seating not, to include the workspaces?
It's my understanding that we are increasing the outlets.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's a separate, is that going to be a separate discussion on?
I don't think that requires Board approval.
Okay, so this will, it'll all be inclusive as part of this project of increasing seating and such? Okay.
Am I correct?
Yes, we'll do that with the same kind of branch. Just install.
Yes, I heard your, what you're saying, so you asked that question, because I was going to ask it too.
You're gonna ask it?
No, you go ahead.
Go, go.
I'm just wondering why we had to go all the way to Wisconsin. Don't people in Michigan and locally make furniture for, was it a competitive bid?
I can't, this is part of the Michigan purchasing consortium. This is one of our vendors that have been vetted by the state of Michigan through their consortium agreement. And it's a vendor that we've used on a regular basis, both because it's approved by the state in terms of pricing and also that they include lifetime warranties on the structural elements of the furniture. So Grand Rapids is, okay. They were part of the, they won the bid at the state level, so.
Okay. We're going down to-
Yeah, letter of consent.
The bus, contract award for 2018 bus loop paving project.
This is, this is presented as a discussion?
It's a discussion.
Yes. Bus Loop is located north of the Student Center Building and serves as a primary bus service location for campus. Existing pavement has deteriorated considerably with heating, wear, due to age and use, and weather damage during freeze thaw cycles. Multiple locations present tripping hazards and safety concerns. The project was developed and funded to replace the pavements of the bus loop, handicap ramps, and selected sidewalk sections. The Board previously approved this work from the Deferred Maintenance Fund. Project includes the replacement of existing asphalt pavement from the service drive through the entire bus loop, subgrade improvements, selective curb and sidewalk replacements, and handicap accessible ramps. Concrete pavement will be utilized throughout the loop to better withstand the weight and turning loads presented by buses. Construction bids were received back from contractors for the work. Asphalt Specialist of Pontiac, Michigan was a low bidder for the scope of work. The bus loop replacement base bid is included in the contract award of $166,000.
Hi, of course. Asphalt Specialists is our vendor here, but you talked about using concrete. Does Asphalt Specialists apply concrete too?
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Yes.
So when I'm looking at all the bidders, did, they chose which projects they were gonna bid on? So for example, Nagel Paving chose not to bid on this bus loop piece, but they bid on the other pieces?
Yes, we put all three projects out in the same bid package to see if we could get a really good price on Lot 6. Prices for Lot 6 didn't come back very well. It wasn't really our intention to do Lot 6 this year anyway, but if we got a really good price, we would have moved forward with it.
So we're not doing Lot 6?
No, we're not.
And then, okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Are you, are we looking to begin this project for the bus loop this year, before, this summer?
Yes.
And will that give us, the summer's what, September and August? So will we have enough time to get it completed before fall semester begins?
Yes.
Or will it overlap into fall semester?
No, it should be done before fall semester.
Okay.
Yes.
I know we voted on an earlier item on the, right away.
Right.
But wouldn't it help get this underway if we voted on this tonight?
I would have no objection to that.
I'd like to move this item.
Yeah, I agree.
And construction season is upon us and I'd like to get this out and if we've got the bidder, let's let him stage it and get it underway. So I'd like to move this tonight.
I'll support that.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, but I do, I do have a question. And my question is, were there any minority companies involved in this or contacted or did they respond?
I don't know if they all did. Thank you. Your insight? I don't know. Ben Henhold says, "I've heard they're purchasing." There were no solicited, no responses with this project.
Is there a reason why there was no solicitation?
We don't have any cement companies that are minority owned.
Maybe if you could, next time, try to research that. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you very much. All right.
Madam Chair, this was not listed as possible action, so we should-
I understand that.
Change the agenda?
Yeah, we have to change that. So it has been-
So is this a double vote?
Yeah.
Move to change, okay. I move we change the agenda to put this on for a vote tonight.
I support the change.
Okay, roll call.
That's a voice.
That's a voice, oh, voice. Ooh, I can't even say that. Voice, call. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, we're, now we're going to-
So I move the main motion to award this contract to Asphalt Specialists.
Support?
Move and support it. Now we need a roll call.
Chair McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Mokan?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Board. That was very gracious of you, Trustee DeBarty. And now, we're going down to tab N. This is an action item. The recommendation is that the Board ratifies the proposed three-year contract effective August 29, 2018- August 29, 2018, continuing through August 27, 2021, between the Washington Community College Education Association, a chapter of the Michigan Education Association, and affiliated with the National Education Association, and the Washington Community College Board of Trustees. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Yes, DeBarty?
I just want to thank the Washington Community College Education Association and their speaker tonight, and saying how well this process went this time around, and it was great. We did it with in-house staff, and it is just reflective of what capabilities we have on our staff in-house to come to an early resolution of this. Apparently, it was approved by the membership of the Education Association by a large majority, and I hope we can pass this tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Chair McNight Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Mokin?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes. Okay, it has been approved by the Board, and I too will just say thank you again to the negotiating team from the college, and with the MEA, and their due diligence of working on this contract and coming to a resolution, and now is passed. Thank you both. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Supported.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.